Good evening. It is 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 10th, and I'm calling this regular city council meeting to order. We have a minimum quorum at the dais. Councilperson Plunkett is not able to be here today. So, we're going to run through this. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Aria Perkins.
Let's all help. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And Mr. Bob Long will lead us in our invocation.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, as we come before you, we just enter your gates with thanksgiving and your courts with praise, praising you and thanking you for what you've done, what you will do for Bastrop, Texas. As we're here tonight, we're to pray for this city council and our mayor and those that will be seated. We thank you that you're going to give them the wisdom and knowledge and discernment and understanding that they need to do your will and accomplish your purposes. Now, Lord, I just ask that when you show them what to do, that you'll give them the grace to do it. Now, Lord, we ask for protection here tonight for a peaceful meeting led of your Spirit. We thank you for Bastrop. Lord, we want to thank you for recent rains, but I have a tendency to continue to pray for rain, Lord, and I pray no storms. Be with our city workers inside the building and those who work outside this building. Lord, again, I just lift up this council, I lift up this meeting, I ask for your complete guidance and that everybody will be at peace as they leave in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Long. So, we're going to go into executive session first. We have item 4A, which we are actually going to deal with in the open, in public, but we're going to go ahead and go into executive session to deal with 4B right now. So, 4B, "A City Council Shall convene and to close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-071 Regarding Contractual Agreements and Ballot Initiatives." So, it is 6:34 PM and council is in executive session. Okay, it is 6:46 PM. We have returned from executive session. We are not going to take any action on item 4B, but on item 4A, which we did not talk about in there, we are going to go through this item, which is "City Council Shall convene and to close the executive session," which we did not, pursuant to Local Government Code Section 551-072, "to deliberate regarding the proposed sale of real estate property located along Jasper Street." Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have been approached by a Realtor, Carlin Ellis, representing Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number Three, that's a newly formed ESD district, who has an interest in purchasing 1808 Jasper Street, which is city-owned property right here. This parcel is city-owned property with a right-of-way abandonment that would also need to happen, and this property right next to it is on the Bastrop County trustee possession. The chances are they want to acquire this entire parcel. So, they have extended an offer. It's in your email. They've given us MLS comps and a letter of intent. The proposed purchase price is $200,000. 1808 Jasper Street.
If only we had a real estate agent with an opinion.
What is that? Do we have the appraisal, Sylvia?
Yes, there are comparables and the letter of intent is in your email box.
How does that purchase, how does the offer price compare with the comparables? Because on the central appraisal district, the value, I mean, the assessed value is $420,000.
So, they've given us comps of 1606 Wilson, that was $134.09 per square foot. They've given us, of course, that's a residential piece of property. They've given us 1800 Chestnut, which is $195,000, list price $395,000, and also a few, let's see, 2001 Chestnut, list price $599.9, at closing price $475,000.
All of those are pretty different from a land. I'm happy to work comps, but I can't do it on the fly right this second. If we delay it till later in the meeting, I can have them worked out for you, but I personally wouldn't have pulled any of those comps. Are they from, they're from a real estate agent or a real estate appraiser?
They are from a, the real estate agent, Ms. Ellis, who's representing. Their letter of intent and those comps are in your mailbox.
Okay, but just like, I haven't seen them, so they just got here today?
No, we were going to talk about it in executive session.
Gotcha, okay. Do we need action right this minute? Because I'm using my area.
You can view the table at any time.
Okay, please, I'm happy to research this, but I wouldn't have used any of those comps. And there are some, there's some lots for sale on 71 at the Tahitian exit that would be a similar comp, because I just know it's a similar size and price and it's bare land. And like, there's other stuff we could pull, but stuff with current buildings on it is off the hook.
Got it.
So, that being considered, is there any need to even act on this right now until we have more information to compare?
You do not need to act on this today.
That would be my recommendation.
If the council would like to table it, that's perfectly fine.
That would just be my preference until we can research and get equal comps.
Well then, no action. Well, tabling is an action, but we can just do no action and it'll show up on the agenda next time.
Magically show up.
Yeah, magically show up.
And I'll be prepared.
Excellent. Okay, so that's 4A, 4B, and now we are at six. Presentations, Mayor Pro Tem's report. So, as many of you know, today marks my final regular meeting, serving as acting mayor Pro Tem. As I reflect upon these last few months, I guess I could say I've learned a few things. First, and Ishmael, you need to know this, if there's a microphone in any room that I walk into, there's about a 50% chance someone's going to ask me to give remarks, and a 100% chance I'm going to say yes. I've been to so many ribbon cuttings that I started wondering whether I needed to carry around my own ceremonial scissors. I think I've attended enough groundbreakings that I have officially earned my free bagel on the groundbreaking punch card, but truly, these last five months have been deeply meaningful in my life. I've been honored to lead during a time when Bastrop needed steady hands and a steady heart. Functional and funny were my goals. I've done my best to bring calmness, professionalism, and progress to the role, and maybe just enough dad jokes to keep things entertaining. Thank you to everyone who supported this council in this season for your encouragement, your prayers, and your partnership. Public service isn't something you do alone, it's something you do with people, with these people and with those people. I'm just, I'm very grateful for everyone in Bastrop that stood alongside us. I also want to offer my heartfelt congratulations to our next mayor, Ishmael Harris. He's stepping into a vital leadership role at a crucial time, and I'm excited to support him and see where his leadership will take us in the days ahead. I wish him all the wisdom, discernment, and peace needed for the journey. Thank you all again for this opportunity, for trusting me, for challenging me, and for believing in Bastrop. Now, let's get to work. Okay. Councilperson Low.
Good afternoon, all. It's good to see everybody. I hope everybody's having a great afternoon. Went to my first P&amp;Z meeting as liaison, and that was pretty cool. See Commissioner Moss here. That was good. It was good to see how they work and good to be a part of that team, so I've been looking forward to doing that over the next three years. I attended the memorial of one of my all-time favorite teachers, Jane Travis, and that was nice to get out and do that. I saw Councilmember Fosler there and a lot of other people there, so it was classmates and friends, it was all right. So, definitely had a good time there, and she had some tears and some laughter. Met with the development staff, with Doc and the team, doing some meetings this week, and it was awesome to see what goes on behind the scenes, and I appreciate the invite that Doc gave out to me, and I'm looking forward to meeting with all the staffs and staff leaders pretty soon. Did the chamber luncheon on 6/4. Our class for the best leadership were highlighted within that, and we got another round of applause and congratulations. Chamber luncheon was great, we had a great speaker, so that was awesome as well. Kicked off the Juneteenth celebration with Man Talk. It was a lot of young men and older men and, you know, well, people like me, old men in there, and it's a lot of the kids, so we got to hear from the kids and the way they think about how we do with them and they do with us, so it was a really good time, and a lot of people broke out of their shell, they didn't want to talk very much. These were even older adults that didn't want to talk, and they got out of their shell, and so it was a good time and learning for all. And then finally, today, went to the TIDAM, Texas Department of Emergency Management Executive Guide Public Officials Workshop, so that was awesome to see that side of it and see what happens in times of when we need emergency services and things of that nature, so that was good. So, I'll bow out. Cynthia, you take over. Thank you.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and before I even talk about anything coming up, I just want to thank you so much for this time that you've been interim mayor. You restored, for the people of this town, stability, integrity, and honesty to the office, so I want to thank you that. But on behalf of this town, on the people, they needed that, and I could feel that coming back. And I had, when you have people stop you on the street and tell you, man, a weight's been lifted, that's a big deal, so I want to thank you so much for that.
Make Bastrop boring again.
That's right. Yeah, they even said, wow, your council members' meetings are boring. I'm like, that's the biggest compliment we could have, so I'm happy to be boring. One thing I do want to mention that is coming up, it's a week from today, Tuesday, which is the 17th, 10:00 AM in the morning, and it is the dedication ceremony in honor of Billy DeWitt, who just happens to be my uncle, he was my mom's brother, and our congressman, Michael McCall, will be there for the ceremony, a lot of special forces. My uncle was Green Beret, special forces, CIA operative, eight popper hearts, with many, many other things. So, we've been working for years, and this is actually going to come to fruition on Tuesday, so I'm so pleased and I hope everyone will join us there. The museum will have a reception afterwards, and I specifically want to thank, there's so many people at the city that have just gone above and beyond, but Sylvia, you, Chief Stefanik, Michaela, Terry, Colin, everyone on their teams who are working so hard, and Glenda Dayton, also at the museum, has really helped. So, please, please come Tuesday at 10 o'clock in front of the post office on Main Street.
Thank you, Councilperson Meyer. Councilperson Plunkett will yield his time as usual. Councilperson Fosler.
I was waiting for the joke. Okay, we got it, we got it in. I wanted to congratulate Bastrop Pride for having a successful launch weekend last weekend. I intended several of their events, and they were really fun. The line dancing on Friday night in particular was fantastic, and line dancing is the theme, y'all. If y'all haven't Googled or seen line dancing, there's like all these fans also. There's actually line dancing happening in the park tonight for Juneteenth, so if we get out of here before 8:00, y'all can do step dancing, and it's next Tuesday as well. So, that is what the kids are doing these days, step dancing and line dancing, it's very fun. Today, yes, I was at the Public Officials Guide, the Texas, put on by Texas Division of Emergency Management, TIDAM, and there are so many organizations working, planning to minimize on, what do they call them, blue sky days, they're always like working around the clock to plan for disasters, and I'm so grateful that we're in a large enough city to have dedicated staff and departments for this, because some smaller towns, their public officials are trying to do it all, and I'm just so grateful that we have such an established and respected and solid, recognized, very connected team working on our behalf. And what's great about TIDAM is they really, they connect you to resources, they don't do the work for you, they want you to know how to do it, so they connect you to the resources, and they want you to know that you've tried it yourself and exhausted all your connections before coming to them, but they're just ready to provide resources. And it is, basically, we had a day of acronyms. Y'all speak in acronyms, and it was pretty interesting. So, I've learned a few more acronyms today, and we learned like the difference between emergencies and disasters. It was really interesting, but it's a deep dive that I want to, I want to take more classes in, I want to learn about the language you speak, so I can appreciate what all y'all do, I really appreciate you, thank you so much.
So, what's the difference between an emergency and a disaster?
I don't, I don't remember right now. The emergency is threat to, threat to life, property, ah, and then the disaster is, oh, one hundred, help. I don't remember, do you remember? Do you remember periodic notes?
Uh-oh, sorry, guys. I didn't know, I was putting you on the spot. I was just curious.
That's why I'm going to take more classes, so I'll actually sink in, they're like, it's like, it was like coming out of a fire hose today, and it was like, also a fire hose joke, yeah. And then also Thursday, I'm really looking forward to canvassing election and having Mayor Ishmael Harris sworn in, and we're going to be fully seated up here, and I'm really looking forward to us being settled and getting our new groove on with y'all. I'm really looking forward to that, and thank you, sir, you've done a great job up here. Really appreciated the way you've embodied this seat a lot, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Well, lots to, more ribbon cuttings to schedule. City Secretary of Office will be working with each of you to try to schedule the ribbon cutting for the bridge, so there you go. Yesterday, after a very robust conversation regarding our water well and the overdue, interestingly enough, it's, you know, now passing tolerance tests, so anyway, thank you to Mayor Pro Tem and to Councilmember Plunkett, who knows about motors, go figure, and had some very interesting questions for the team yesterday. Our well is six months overdue, and it is related to a couple of factors, this motor being one of three motors having a vibration issue, but as we received an email today, they're replacing the motor, but this, the motor that we have on hand is within operable tolerances, so we will be starting this up on Monday. We did receive the initial appraisal for Blakely Lane, we are wrapping those final details up. It is along the lines as staff expected, so that will move quickly through the process. We did receive alternate bids for the rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant. We are within about $200,000 of our ARPA dollars, and so we will be moving forward to issue that contract, which will rehab wastewater treatment plant one and two, which will buy us years of service. Water Street Boring, we did receive, we have moved to engineering to accommodate where very little base was discovered. We thought Water Street was going to be a much easier project, and as I've discovered in Bastrop, nothing is ever as it seems. But while we were doing the boring for Water Street, we went ahead and did Linden and Farm, the borings at Delgado Park for the new park equipment, and other areas where we know we're going to be working, so may as well get all of that out of the way.
Did we find any gold?
Not yet, no.
No, okay.
I do know we found very little base or none at all. Parks and Recreation, we are in final design and costs and development with Craftsman. I did talk to Gilbert today regarding the park and working with a management consultant to get a design in. We don't have to do any FEMA work until after all of that is touched, and so we'll continue to move through that. We are in the budget, we are in the throes of budget season, staff's back there pretty haggard, I don't know that they have a smile left in them after getting through budget hearings. We don't have any significant issues at this time, and we are within the existing tax rate, and so I really want to give good kudos to the finance department and to all of the staff, really, because this year we launched OpenGov, and it's been no secret, we've had a changeover in the finance department, which always leads to questions as to, you know, what's there, who's doing it, or do we have every dollar accounted for? And so I want to call in to click on OpenGov, because I want council to see exactly where staff has been working and placing their time. This transparency tool, you know, Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland said he had a certain thing that was going to be his thing after he left council. This is going to be my thing for the residents of Bastrop. If you don't manage your money, then, you know, your tax rate and everything else suffers. We've put impact fees in place, we've put exactions into place, and so we're doing a whole heck of a lot more with the same or less. And so, Colin, if you'll exit out that milestone and task up in the corner, and you'll scroll down, this budget is in development, and you can scroll all the way down, you can see that revenues exceed expenditures, and so we're going to start now adding a little bit of meat back to the bone as it relates to projects and some of the requests for staff. But what I want you to really see is, I want you to go to, if you can just go to Proposals, yes, and go to the Police Department's proposal, and yes, I'm going to pick on the Police Department, because she is the largest budget piece. So, that is her proposal summary, that is her proposed expenses in the budget, and if you scroll down, scroll all the way down, yeah, up on the very, you're going to click Well, why don't y'all go help him, please? Here, Andres is going to drive. So, all of these line items are what makes up the Police Department budget, and you guys get these in your book, and you get these in your book, and you get these in tables. You're going to get to see what makes up each line item, and the public itself will be able to see exactly what makes up every single line item. If you go now, if you go to Reports, Andres, to show what a report looks like, and you can go to a classic report, or even a dashboard, go to a dashboard. You can click on BEDC, that's fine. And so as we work our way through the budget, and you have the financial report, you'll get to see what percentage of the budget is complete as it relates to what projects that they're going to be working on, you will get to drill down, what percentage are they, where are they, and this is where you get to ask those substantive questions about, you're supposed to be at 4%, why are you at 5.32? And we have a very easy litmus for what did we do right, what are we doing wrong, and this gets so granular, it's built so granular, you're going to be able to click by period if that's how you choose to run the report. How much did the staff spend on supplies last month versus this month? So, very proud of the staff as it comes across, we have found so much data here that needed to be cleaned up, wasn't coded properly, et cetera, et cetera, which is to be expected, and this is only going to get better. This also has a place that's called Stories up there. Every month, the budget and the staff will get to highlight what they're doing, how it relates to our focus areas, how it relates to the story they're trying to tell per department. They're not built out yet, but this is also building out a digital budget book, so super excited about the staff being able to quantitatively measure to the residents and to the council the good work that they do. Go back to the PowerPoint. So, last item is we are having our city council retreat on June 27th and June 28th. Mayor elect Harris will be formally seated by then. We will have a very light P&amp;Z agenda that evening, and we will have a carryover to July 1st. We have some impact fee discussions that are planned, that have already been noticed, and so you have some homework that is in your email by LeadWell, that is our retreat person, so please, it's not spam, please, please do that. You also, in your email I sent you today, you have a link from the auditor, so there's some questions as we get to the final throes of the audit, so, any questions?
No, Sylvia, I just wanted to comment on the LeadWell questions. It was very interesting, and when I reported to my husband, he said, you're what? I said, no, really, that's what that says. I answered all the questions, he said, did you answer honestly? I said, yes, I did. I love that, that was great, thank you.
And just for the residents to understand, they're taking a test on Myers-Briggs.
It's a personality test, yeah.
It's a personality test, and so, and this is really related to, number one, how do they receive information, which makes it better for staff on how we present it, but more importantly, how do they interact with one another to get the work done, so.
And I haven't taken it, but I kind of read something about it, and it kind of categorizes you as one of five personalities.
I'm the field sergeant, could you tell? I'm field commander.
Yeah. Okay, excellent. Any questions, council? Okay, so we're going to move on to proclamation, recognition of June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Bastrop. I'm going to read this here. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day, Freedom Day, or Jubilee Day commemorates June 19th, 1865, the historic day when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to announce the end of slavery, more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Juneteenth marks a pivotal moment in our nation's history and continues to serve as a powerful reminder of the struggle for freedom, equality, and justice for African-Americans and all people. And whereas the city of Bastrop proudly honors Juneteenth as a day of remembrance, celebration, and continued progress, acknowledging the strength, resilience, and cultural contributions of African-Americans throughout our city, state, and nation. And whereas the Bastrop Juneteenth Celebration, held this year on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, brings our community together in reflection and unity through a series of meaningful, inclusive events, including Man Talk, a safe and welcoming space for men and boys of all ages to share their experiences, reflect on their personal journeys, and build connections that uplift and inspire. The Bastrop Juneteenth Celebration rose Clemens Scholarship Musical, honoring the legacy of education and excellence by supporting the next generation of leaders through scholarship and song. The Bastrop Juneteenth Parade, a vibrant display of community pride, history, and cultural expression. The Juneteenth Festival and Street Dance, which fills Fisherman's Park and our historic main street with music, food, laughter, and celebration, as we come together in the spirit of joy and togetherness. Now, therefore, I, John Kirkland, acting mayor Pro Tem of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Bastrop, and encourage all residents to take part in this year's celebration, to reflect on our shared history, to uplift the voices and stories of the Black community, and to remain committed to building a future rooted in equity, freedom, and unity for all. And I have signed this on behalf of the city of Bastrop, and the official seal is applied.
On behalf...
Your name, sir? Your name, sir?
Ishmael Harris.
Mayor-elect Ishmael Harris.
Mayor-elect, I'm here as a citizen.
Oh, okay.
And the, this is my last duty as vice chair of the Juneteenth Committee. So because I'm mayor-elect, I'm having to step down, which I'm good with, so it's in great hands. But on behalf of the Juneteenth Committee, we would like to thank y'all for this proclamation. As you stated, we are having an event next weekend, June 21st is our parade, starts at 10 o'clock. We'll have a festival following the parade and then later tonight we'll have a street dance at 7 o'clock. It'll be on Main Street. If you need any details about the events or things that's going on, you can go to bastropjuneteenth.com or our Facebook page, Bastrop Juneteenth Celebration. So we're looking forward to everyone showing up next weekend. Also, next year is our 40-year anniversary, so we're planning on a lot of big things happening next year, so be on the lookout for it. Yeah, so thank y'all.
Moving on to item 6E, a presentation from Nate Gold from Texas Parks and Wildlife, reintroducing prescribed burns at Buscher State Park and Bastrop State Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, council. My name is Nathaniel Gold. I am the Park Superintendent of the Lost Pines State Park Complex, which is home to both your Bastrop and Buscher State Parks. And I am here to inform you all about the upcoming use of prescribed fire as a management tool in the state parks and let you all know that we're hosting a community meeting at the Bastrop County Community Center. That's right next to Mayfest Park. It's off American Legion Drive on the 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to share our intent with local residents and also hear from them as well. And after the Rolling Pines Fire, this was a commitment that we made after the facilitated learning analysis by outside agencies about the Rolling Pines Fire itself, as well as our town hall meeting where we got to release the findings from the facilitated learning analysis and also hear from members of the community. And this is one of the commitments that we made to the community. And so we took all of the recommendations from the facilitated learning analysis very seriously and we adopted all of their recommendations, as well as this is us making good in our commitment with the community to host a public meeting because it's what they said that they wanted. So we take the community feedback very seriously and I know that you all do as well. But I want to talk to you real quick about the unique landscape that we're protecting. The Lost Pines are a rare fire-dependent loblawli pine in post-oak woodland, unique to this part of Texas. And Bastrop State Park is one of the largest remnants of this ecosystem. The role we play is critical for biodiversity and species like the endangered Houston toad. And why prescribe fire? Fire in this ecosystem is an ecological necessity. The Lost Pines evolved with regular fire and without it, the ecosystem becomes unhealthy. Fire reduces dense underbrush, allowing native species to thrive and restore its balance. Prescribed fire is a management tool to reduce hazardous fuel loads that can feed dangerous wildfires, which can cause damage to property and lives. This work will help prevent catastrophic wildfires. Fire also supports the regeneration of the native loblawli pine, controls invasive species, and supports water infiltration and nutrient cycling. In regard to safety, public and firefighter safety will be our top priority. We will have highly trained crews from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, Bastrop Fire Department, and Bastrop County's Emergency Services District Two partnering with us to conduct these burns. All burns will follow a burn plan that includes weather monitoring, fuel moisture analysis, safety zones, and inter-agency coordination. We're employing a public information strategy to include social media updates, a website specific to fire in Bastrop State Park, physical signage at the entrance to subdivisions and neighborhoods surrounding the state parks, press releases, and an opt-in text notification service for residents. Notifications will be sent to nearby residents and stakeholders in advance of us putting fire on the ground at any time. The burn season that we're talking about right now is fall and winter '25, 2026. And also, going back to safety, smoke management is one of the things we're very sensitive about and we'll use weather conditions that promote smoke dispersal and avoid affecting sensitive areas, specifically highways 95, 71, and 21. We're planning for our first burn to also be a smaller and relatively straightforward burn unit, just to earn back the public's confidence and trust there. And our intent here, in closing, is to have a safer, healthier forest for the future. Prescribed fire is a scientifically-backed, carefully managed, and truly community-conscious tool. It honors the natural history of this land and protects it for future generations. Our goal is to have resilient landscapes, reduced wildfire risk, and a safer Bastrop community. And we hope to see you all at our meeting on the 23rd. And also, if you would like, we're happy to provide an FAQ document to you all by the end of this week in case you have questions or concerns from your constituents that you'll be able to speak to. And we're also happy to interface with any concerns or questions you get from your constituency as well. We want to be good partners with you all. And please, if there's anything that y'all need, let us know.
So you talked about safety procedures. I kind of wrote down, you know, three things. One of them was safety procedures, the second one was, and that kind of starts with weather, like not starting the fire if you shouldn't have a fire that day.
Absolutely.
And then, and you mentioned that. And then, and the third thing I wrote down was the availability of firefighting resources on that day. And you mentioned a lot of different agencies that were going to participate. Are, like, describe that participation that they're going to have on the day when you're doing a prescribed burn. Like, how close standing by will they be? And, you know, yeah, how quickly can they get to something if it does get to a point where you're like, wait a second, let's slow that down?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. In my conversations with Chief Stone, he would like to have his firefighters there with us as contingency resources and also working on the line if possible. Because we're going to have a large crew of a lot of folks, there will be a lot of contingency resources. But Chief Stone has mentioned to me that he doesn't feel that his firefighters get as much exposure to prescribed fire. And so I know that there may be some prescribed fires that they will be conducting in some of your city parks coming up, but Chief Stone has requested that Bastrop Fire Department have, play a role in this operation.
Well, but in addition to that, for instance, I mean, like, what is your, what's the scale of the standby services that you'll have for a prescribed burn?
Wade, do you have any feedback on that?
Sure, yeah, so...
Please come to the microphone, yeah. Just tell us who you are briefly.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Wade Powell. I'm the Fire and Habitat Management Coordinator at the Lost Pines. So a lot of our contingency planning is going to be based on conditions. And one of the first things we look at, as Nate mentioned, is going to be the availability of close resources to the fire. So I'm thinking with these early burns, again, we're looking for high levels of staffing. A lot of these partners have requested that they be actively involved in the operation, as Nate mentioned. Local standby contingency resources are often written into plans. But we're also going to be looking at what the staffing is at local fire stations and at the local, you know, statewide response offices such as TFS when we're making that go-no-go decision on the days leading up to the burn. Does that address your question?
Yeah, it's in the ballpark, yeah. Just contemplating what people's concerns might be. And so if you sort of, if you start from accepting the premise that, you know, this is a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Right? Well, then you want to keep turning it into a bad thing.
Yes, sir.
And so you've got to pick your days and make sure you've got appropriate, you know, standby and...
So a common resource and one that we're riding into the plans, will that, there will be a standby bulldozer, for instance, on the burns, apart from any dozers that are actively engaged in operations?
Right. Council, any other questions? Councilperson Low?
There's a good question here I wanted to ask. Oh, how would the metrics be? How will you measure success or what is this going to tell you? What information can we get readily available to, you know, what is successful or what kind of metrics do you use?
Yeah, so we actually have an extensive monitoring program on the state parks. We have what's called long-term vegetation plots that we monitor not just during prescribed fire, but after wildfire events and even when no action is taking place. That's the way we're able to monitor the health of the ecosystem and compare untreated units to treated units. So immediately following the burn, typically like after burn day, the first thing that happens is mop up and smoke monitoring, right? The job's not done when the fire's out. We make sure that there are no chances of, we call it containment. We make sure that everything's contained and then we continue to monitor until it's controlled. That would be things like, you know, daily checks until we can call it controlled. And then once it's controlled, then our long-term monitoring goes into effect. So we'll do, we'll walk the unit on lines, we call them transects, and we'll see, okay, did we meet our objectives? You know, did we consume the fuels we were trying to consume? And did we leave the trees we were trying to leave? That information goes back in as the planning process starts over. We'll look back at that plan. Was that a good plan? Or do we need to tweak it, have conditions on the ground changed so that next time we're going to do it better?
Do you use an accelerant for the burn or do you just use the native material that's there?
Yes, sir, great question. So we, the fuels as they are on the landscape are what burns. We don't add anything to them. We use drip torches, which have a mixture of gasoline and diesel, but that just lights the fire. It's not like we're blanketing the area with it.
Right. Councilperson Fossey?
Thanks for taking lessons learned and putting it into this new season for the wildfires, sorry, for the prescribed, for the prescribed burns. Tell me about the text alerts. Y'all haven't done that before. Y'all haven't done that before, is that a new thing you're doing?
So, yeah, it's a new program. And it's our attempt to streamline the day-of notification process. It's been very hard to reach all the residents who want a day-of notification and sometimes those notifications don't get out until ignition operations have already stopped. So this system, which we will widely publicize, will be a simple text thread to a number and then that automatically adds the phone number to our mail list. And then the day of the burn, we'll be able to push a notification to all the people on the list.
And one thing about the notifications, Wade mentioned that oftentimes notifications would still be taking place after the fire started. I just wanted to clarify that that's because we would call them on the phone and sometimes those conversations will get a little long-winded, so. And that's what we're trying to fix, to where we can have notifications out to everyone before fires on the ground.
And is the Warren Central Texas, is that a system you're using or is it totally separate?
We're using one called Everbridge.
Everbridge, okay. And people need to sign up in advance?
Yes, and at our meeting we'll have handouts and QR codes and things like that for folks.
So that's the greatest thing we can do is spread that to, okay, okay, spread the Everbridge.
Yeah, my crystal ball up here says that you're going to get, you know, 15%, 20% max sort of participation, like, how do you get people out to vote, for instance? You know, you get 15%, 20% max participation and then 80% of the remaining people are going to see a big smoke cloud up on the hill and go, what the?
Yeah, we wanted to wait until we presented to you all tonight before we started getting the word out there in the public ourselves. We just felt that we didn't want to catch you all unaware or anything like that and give you all the heads up. We have already spoken to Commissioner's Court with Bastrop County as well. But before we wanted to get the word out there about our upcoming meeting, we wanted to visit with you all first.
Okay. Councilperson Meyer?
Thank you. And on that line too, what other things? Like, I'm just thinking, when we have the information as a city, how can we help you? Can we put it on our website? Can we do different alerts through the city? Because it's great what y'all are doing, but I just think the more people, the county, if they could have something, just the more communication, the better. Because as Mayor Pro Tem says, we know on social media, whatever, but the more people that do know can respond faster to those people on social media and reassure them. So what other measures could we do to help y'all?
Thanks, Councilmember Meyer, I appreciate the question. This is something that we discussed with Sylvia last year. And what we're going to do is, we're going to keep in good communication with Marco and City Manager Correia Trevino as well. And there was talk of, and we probably need to firm up because this was last year when we visited, but we're going to have information in kiosk that the city will put up on city property with a QR code that goes to our website that talks about what's going to happen here. And so there already are conversations that we've been having with the city and it was one of Sylvia's requests that we make sure we keep in close contact with Marco and Sylvia too. Yeah. And I appreciate the support.
So...
Because we'll get the calls too.
Yeah, yeah.
Y'all definitely will.
But 911 will get the calls also, correct?
And we have met with, I'm sorry.
No, no, and so, you know, if they can tell the person that, hey, everything's okay, this is a prescribed burn, fire department's already there, we're on top of it. Is there a rollover mechanism with 911 that someone in Dallas is going to be answering some calls and they need to know too? I mean, like, how do you get that to the 911 people?
We have met with OEM Manager Altgilt pretty regularly about this and we do know that calls will increase. And I don't know about the rollover measure. I can make a note to ask and follow up with you about that.
Because you can imagine, you know, the six people manning phones in the local area know all about it and then it rolls over to somewhere else and they don't have any idea. So then it creates more calls of the fire department trying to, you know, push someone out there.
Cool. Thank you. I will follow up and shoot you a note via email.
Well, it's not so important that I know, it's just, you know, one of those things to add to your list.
And it is one of, something that we have had conversations with Mr. Altgilt about too, but it'd be good to get refreshed on all that.
Yeah, great. Any other questions, council? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Item 6F, receive an update regarding the expansion of the KARTS Now service territory boundary for the City of Bastrop.
Mayor and council, I wanted to just preempt this. If you recall, last year we embarked on an Uber rideshare program as a way to expand service. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get to where we wanted to with Uber. Had a visit with Dave Marsh with KARTS and KARTS happily stepped up. And so Viv has been working with them and so here we are, ta-da.
Hi, good evening. Yes, what CM Correio said, so, yeah, we're very excited to expand this program. I wanted to formally introduce Dana with KARTS, who will give you an overview of the program. We're super excited.
Good afternoon, council, good evening. My name's Dana Plod. I'm the Communications Director for KARTS, a rural transportation system. So for some of you, you guys may not know me or know about KARTS, so I kind of want to give you guys a broad overview of who we are, what we do, and what we have going on. Let's see. So KARTS is a rural transportation system. We're a public agency, we're federally, state, and locally funded. We rely heavily on grant funding. We cover 10 counties, rural transportation only. So the cities of Travis, Williamson, and Hayes, the urbanized areas, are not our service areas, we cover the rural portions. We recently incorporated Lano County into our district, so now I have 10 counties I cover for marketing. But it's exciting, we're happy to welcome them to our district. And so for each of our counties, we have different services. We tailor our services basically to the community's needs. And I'll kind of go into the different services that we have in the areas and in Bastrop County. So the service we're talking about now is the on-demand service. It's a micro-transit, it's on-demand, it runs Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It works with an app on your phone, the KARTS Now app. But we also know that not everybody has access to a smart device or likes technology. So we have a dedicated line in our call center that people can call and basically our call center is using the app. We like to push the app because it actually tells you, you know, who your driver is, you can see like the van, and there's a couple of options that you can choose. Maybe you're not ready in five minutes, you want a van a little bit later. So those are kind of the benefits with the app. And we've noticed that the app uses are increasing as opposed to the phone, so. And we're excited, we did just enlarge the zone on Monday at the request of the city. So you can see we're covering more neighborhoods now and more areas in the city at the request. So we're really excited about that and I'm happy to report on it and how it's doing, so.
What is the larger area?
I think it's about 10 miles. It's right there, you can see the city's proposal and then we basically did the same thing. So ours is on the left, the zone, and that was the city's proposal of the city limits. I think the only thing we didn't include is like long stretches of the highway where there's really nothing there. It's just the highway.
No, I think my question is, is how does this, you said you intended by 10 square miles or something like that? This isn't a before and after. This is just new.
Yeah, I don't have the before, but I mean, I'm happy to get that to you. So like, you can see where the state park, we included more of the state park. We've included some more of Tahitian. Is that the industrial complex down below that wasn't in before? And there's a lot of neighborhood up to the right of 95 that we included. That's neighborhood and residential, so. We've increased this zone by about three miles. And then we noticed that Bastrop and Lockhart, we have this service in six different cities right now. We noticed that Bastrop and Lockhart were the largest riderships and our wait times started to increase. So we were able to procure some service expansion dollars from Techstat and we added a vehicle in March to the Lockhart zone and to the Bastrop zone. And since then, we've noticed like wait times and ridership increase. So very excited about that. You can kind of see here, five to seven minutes, it's been reduced, the wait time. And then here's some ridership number two as well. And so these are all of our zones. In September, we added, we usually, we had four before and we added the city of La Grange and city of Elgin. So they both now have on-demand transit within the city limits. So now we're up to six cities. We hope to bring micro transit. We know this is the way people want to travel. They want to travel when they want to get there on demand. They don't want to wait an hour for a bus or go to a stop. So we're hoping to bring this to the larger cities in all of our counties. And then here are fares. They're basically $2 one way. You can get a day pass and ride all day for $6 or you can buy a monthly pass for $88 and ride all month, as many times as you want. And then there's half fares available as well and children, 12 and up can ride at no charge. I think that's like a, I mean, can ride without an adult. I think it's a great thing to promote for the summer for moms that, you know, don't want to shuttle kids around all summer. They can go to the pool. And so I'll tell you later, but we're working with Communications of Bastrop to do some promotional stuff about that, so. And then I have some little instructional...
Looking for a day or month pass?
On how to buy a pass.
Now that Karts Now has transitioned to fare collection, buying a pass can make trip booking quicker and might even save you some money. If you want to buy a daily or monthly pass, just tap on the menu bar in the top-left corner of the ride booking screen. Select the Via Pass option and choose the pass option that meets your needs. Please note that at this time, passes may only be purchased by credit or debit card. Welcome aboard.
So it's pretty simple. I've done some like training too at senior centers and things like that to get them to be able to use the app. So just wanted to show you guys that. This is our country bus service, so if you don't live in the city limits of that on-demand zone, you can call and get this service. It's country bus because it's the really rural hoots and hollers of the county. It'll get out into those dirt roads and pick those people up at their house and then take them locally where they need to go. It is a reservation-based service, so they need to call in advance to schedule a ride. Same kind of fares, $2, $4 or $6, depending on how far they're traveling. We did do a partnership with CAPCOG and the area agency on aging, so with this service, seniors 60 and above can ride at no charge. We noticed that after COVID, seniors weren't getting out of their house. They were used to getting meals delivered at home. And so really want to get them back out to the community centers, to the food pantries, to, just to connect with neighbors, to get their hair done, just to be part of the community so they can ride at no charge. And it's been very, very successful in all of our counties. Bastrop County and Hayes County are the largest ridership. Then we have our fixed routes. These are inner-urban routes. There are regional routes that travel from the 10 different counties into the city of Austin. Basically, you're going to need to look at the schedule, go to that bus stop, catch the bus, and then it'll stop at a different stop. So they're fixed schedules, but they cover all of these cities. And we have service to the airport. So you can catch the inner-urban bus at the Bastrop station here in town. It stops at our Cedar Creek location and then the next stop is the airport. Our Bastrop station is also a park-and-ride, so you're welcome to leave your car there. You can just park at your own risk, but it is across from the police station, so we think it's safe. We haven't had any problems of people parking there. But it is Monday through Friday. It's not weekend service, so you'll have to plan it out, but there is access to the airport. And then on the horizon, we have some things coming up. We're going to be working on our Bastrop station. We've got some funding to do expansion of our park-and-ride, to add some amenities. We're wrapping up our Smithville Station renovation. It's looking really nice. It was an eyesore for a very long time. We apologize. So we are putting some lipstick on that right now. And then our Eastside Bus Plaza in Austin is now the home of Greyhound and Flix Bus. They approached us when they got rid of their station off of Canag Lane and we've had a lot more traffic than we anticipated, so we're adding more amenities to Eastside. We're adding more restrooms, bus shelters. But from that Eastside Bus Plaza, we make direct connections to Capital Metro, Flix Bus, Greyhound and all sorts of like ride share, Waymo, Ubers, Lyft, electric bikes. So it's really a multimodal hub. And then I mentioned Karts Now zone. We can check that off. That got done on Monday, which was, we're happy about that. It was, usually takes, if you're going to expand a zone, six weeks, but our developer was able to get it done in four weeks. So happy about that. We have upcoming, I have some filming with the city of Bastrop marketing. They were going to work on some promotional videos for Karts Now and the service. We did some brainstorming sessions and really excited about that and appreciative that I have help from cities that are going to help me get the word out about public transportation. I go to a lot of meetings in every county and in every city and transportation's always a number-one topic. And I'm always like, but you do have some. You may not know about it. And so the city actually being proactive and helping me get the word out is like Godsend. So happy for that and thank you, team, for helping. And then we are, we did a proposal for some climate pollution reduction grant funds that the city of Austin was able to procure and it did not get cut. So with that, we're hoping to add some commuter routes for commuters to get them off of the highway and into Austin. I think we have four commuter routes proposed and we're going to try to add some amenities to our Bastrop station. We've talked with Capital Metro. They just did a whole new electric bike program and we're hoping to get some of their bikes and put them at the station, maybe here at the Bastrop station and then maybe at the mobility hub in town by the post office. So the people are riding the electric bikes into town, they could drop them off there and then vice versa. So two stations of where to park them is kind of what we're proposing. We are waiting to hear back from them. And then we're going to add some more shelter and more parking spaces at our Bastrop station. So this is kind of, you know, what we have in mind for like the mobility hub, you know, e-bikes. You've got all of the Karts Now vehicles are electric vehicles, so we hope to add some more charging stations and some more shelters. Okay, and this is what I'm super excited about. We have a new app and I know everybody's got an app, but we've never had like an app, so this is new for us and it's actually going to have all of our services in one app. So we'll have country bus, inner-urban, Karts Now. You'll be able to see if there's an Uber or a ride share possibility available. You'll be able to see Capital Metro. All modes of transportation will be in this app. So when you download it, you'll be able to trip plan. You'll see the bus coming to you. You'll be able to pay for your services. You'll have real-time data. Yeah, so we're excited about that and that's what we have going on. And here's all my information. You can follow us on social media. That's a great way to see what we have going on. You can sign up for updates on our website and, yeah. Oh, the comparison. Okay, yeah, so this was, the black zone was the original zone and then you can see what we've added. The red zone above was a pilot that we did and it's no longer, so. I think it was three miles was what we calculated that we increased it. And yeah, does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
For the electric bike stations, is that for people who own electric bikes already or is that like rentals, like in the picture?
It would be like rentals. Yeah, yeah, super awesome.
Not scooters, bikes.
Not scooters, bikes.
Cool. Okay, thanks.
Yep. And then I brought you guys Karts Now t-shirts.
For council.
Here, you can house up. Thank you, guys.
Councilperson Lowe? No, we're not done. We got two more lights on up here.
Oh, all right.
Get back up here.
All right, sorry.
Councilperson Lowe?
Thank you for the swag. Don't run from us. We are.
Okay. I thought it was off the hook.
No, would there ever be a time that you think hours would expand as far as, you know, you have 7:00, 7:00 to 7:00? Would it possibly be later on in the afternoon, ever a time?
You mean like late-night service?
Mm-hmm. Or weekends?
Party buses, yes. That's always like a topic of conversation and we're always open to something, but it would involve, you know, funding and things like that. But we're open to discuss anything. We want to tailor our stuff to what the community needs and if you, we've even talked about like maybe, I know like Elgin has one night where they do like sip, shop and stroll and all the town, all the businesses in town stay open a little bit late. So if there was like a day or something, if we wanted to introduce it that way, where it's like, you know, a night in town and our buses run a little bit later.
Yeah, I was just curious if you had any other information as to why that 7 o'clock was the cutoff? You know what I mean?
Well, because before it was 8 to 5 and it was country bus service and so now we've got, yeah, so 7 to 7 is like, it was a big expansion for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thanks. This may be a question for Vivy or maybe for you, but I want to go back on the e-bikes because I think you had a picture maybe a few slides earlier on the charging stations on the e-bikes. And I want to see, I want to just picture what that looks like. Yeah, is it down?
So this is a mention and this is a proposal that we have proposed. So we haven't gotten funding for it, but we have talked with Dottie Watson. So they did their whole e-bike thing, but there has to be a power source, so, yeah.
Right. And so what I'm, seven days a week, I'm at Main Street and Spring Street and that's where the Karts station is. So you know what, everybody knows what my concern is going to be is it's not going to take away from parking spaces, right? We're not going to, we're not going to sacrifice parking for e-bike chargers, right?
So the discussion that I had with Dave Marsh of Karts is their existing place at Karts. There is a large swath there that is Techstat, but it's under city, it's a part of our maintenance operation. And how can we help facilitate the expansion of charging stations there?
Over in that area. Great, great, great. Good. The answer, that's, I'm not concerned anymore. Thank you.
We don't want to take parking. Parking is very valuable. We know.
Oh, yes it is.
We know. Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, no more lights. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, so we're now going to move on to item eight, citizens' comments. Mr. Citizen. Okay, so no citizen comments today? Excellent. Boring, exactly. Mr. Moss, get up here and make a fool of yourself. Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to pull item 9B for a little bit of discussion. Council, is anything else that you guys want to pull from this?
9A and 9C, please.
Okay, so we have no ordinances remaining in the consent agenda, so we're pulling the ordinances for discussion up here.
She pulled 9A and 9C?
Yes, and I pulled 9B.
Oh, okay.
B is in Bravo.
Oh, okay. So A, B, C?
A, B, C, right. So that means we have the consent agenda items of 9D, 9E, 9F, 9G, 9H, 9I. And those are all resolutions, so we do not need to read those headings. So council, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Lowe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, the 9D through 9I passed unanimously. Now we'll go on to item 9A. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-53 amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025 in accordance with existing statutory requirements. So I'm going to take this to Councilperson Fosser and basically let her ask her question.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura, for coming up. Since we passed our budget in open session, I think that we should pass all of our amendments in open session. So anytime, just, I would just want to give you a heads up from here on out. I don't have any issue with this particular one, but I'd like for them all to be read in the public record, anything to do with the budget. So if we could just talk about it and then we'll probably quickly pass it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Laura.
And this was actually passed during the FY24 budget where during the budget process, it was requested from the DIAS that 250K be set aside for special park projects designated just for that. In FY24, due to construction and the project itself, not all of those funds were utilized. So this amendment would take from fund balance, the remaining from that set-aside fund to be utilized for May Fest. And this is just approving the spending of that remaining fund.
So you're not approving the spending. What we're approving is moving that money so that the continued repairs, there's a tractor, there's some other items that Fleet and Facilities has identified.
Awesome. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilperson Fosser, a second from Councilperson Lowe. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. 9A passes. Now we'll move on to item 9B. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-54, amending Chapter 1, Article 1, Park Rules of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances to reflect various updates to language, permit requirements and related processes as attached in Exhibit A and move to include on the June 24, 2025, Consent Agenda for a Second Reading. Ms. Moore, I have a very specific question that I think you have been sent via email.
Yes, sir.
And it has to do with, let me get my iPad open here. So on page 24 of the packet, there is a, and then I got to go to item 9B. 9B.
F under insurance?
Yes. I'm just trying to get to it myself. Here we go. Under insurance. It says that if an entity is involved in the commercial use of the park, that they shall provide proof of insurance to the city and the amount of, and then the amount is crossed out. And so since there is no amount, I wanted to ask what it is supposed to be.
The amount is a million. I was doing this in a council meeting and I marked it out and forgot to go back and put it in there after I got it confirmed. So I apologize for that.
No worries. Well, then, council, when we make a motion for this, if you're inclined to approve it, then please put in that the insurance amount on page 24 of the packet should be 1 million. That's it for me. Anyone else have a question? Go ahead.
Let's see. Do you have a document?
Yes, ma'am.
For page, for page 5, which is page 22 of the packet, but page 5 of the regs, under prohibited activities, the second one, we have jumping, diving and wading into waterways. And I remember the previous discussion, was it like from a year ago when y'all updated it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
When you really wanted to focus on the dangerous activities, but we wanted to add a provision where people could swim at their own risk. And I think that wading got left there.
It's on E1, just below that, okay.
But I don't think it should be under the dangerous part. I think if you read it.
So it's under prohibited, that you can't wade, but later on in the document, it says that you can. So is that what you're asking, is you want me to remove that word?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I think jumping and diving is fine, and then we strike wading into waterways, because it's talking about the dangerous stuff.
No, that's fair.
We'll let you safely wade. Okay.
So another amendment for the motion.
Yes, I got one more, please. And then, Teri, for you, page two, for people at home, page 19, under the concession stand. It's about midway, it says all other concession stands will be handled through a state permit. I think it meant state permit, and I think that, I think we talked about it earlier. Does that need to be city permit there?
Actually, it's all other concession to be handled through a county permit.
County permit, okay. So we're changing spate, whatever that was, to county.
Yeah. I'm not quite sure what the definition of spate was at any time. But this is good a time, Zini, fix that.
Yeah. That's all I saw. Thank you.
Might you be inclined to make a motion?
Yes, here we go. I'd like to have a motion to approve with three modifications, with the insurance being up to, sorry, insurance to a million, and the concession changing spate to county, and...
Strike wading from dangerous activities.
Yes, and strike wading from dangerous, from prohibited activities. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from counselperson Foster, a second from counselperson Meyer. And do you have some additional comments? Oh, okay. Well, then, any comments or questions, counsel? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Go on to item nine C. Consider an act on Resolution Number R 2025-98, approving an inter-local participation agreement with the Purchasing Corporation of America. Hello?
Hi.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Thanks for bringing this to our attention and getting us registered with it. It looks fantastic. My only question was just a little, and since it's a resolution, I wanted to bring it up this time. Page two, at the very bottom of page two, there's an empty blank there, venue outside, do we need that filled in? The venue outside of the court jurisdiction, can we have a blank on that? It's under General Provisions Number Eight, the venue outside Texas.
Okay, okay.
If we need something in there, let's get it in there, and if not, then we'll go forward.
I see that. I don't think we need anything there.
This is mostly for Texas.
Okay.
Well, litigation, so if companies were based outside.
This is blank.
Yeah.
On page 30, page two of three.
Correct, page two of three and page 30 of the packet.
Say, yeah, court jurisdiction.
I guess if...
Bastrop County or some other place, or...
I should have asked you ahead of time to give you the first...
We can check on that to see what we need to put there.
Okay. Well, this is a resolution, so I think we can probably still approve this, but I'll grant the city manager the ability to fill that in.
Yeah, I don't want to hold it up, but...
Yeah.
Can we do that?
I'd say so. Yeah.
Yeah, I would recommend Bastrop County for the venue.
Mm-hmm.
That would be...
Well, no, I know that we would recommend Bastrop County, but they may disagree.
No, yeah. Their, their venue, as enumerated in number six, is Harris County.
I know.
This issue is for members outside of the state of Texas. Ours is number four and five. We're within the state of Texas, and there's governing law that's provisioned, and then there's venue in Texas on number six.
Oh, venue outside Texas, you're right, line eight.
Yeah, seven and eight don't apply to us.
So really, eight is not applicable.
No, not applicable.
Even if any of the companies we contract with are located elsewhere than Texas.
So the cooperative has the agreement. We are joining the cooperative. The cooperative would then have issue with the company, not us.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, so I think it's fine as is.
The blanks are fine, or should we do NA?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes, I mean, you could have vendors in any of the 50 states jurisdictions, so, right, you wouldn't want to list all of that for outside of Texas. It just wouldn't make any sense. You would always want to, if, in the unlikely situation where you had a out-of-state lawsuit filed, you would file a motion to, to bring it in Texas.
Here, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve from counselperson Meyer, a second from counselperson Low. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We have already approved nine D through nine I as part of the consent agenda, so we're going to move on to items for individual consideration. Ten A. Consider action to approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, appointing a city council nominee as the general assembly representative to the Capitol Area Council of Government, CAPCOG, and replacing current member Lael Nelson, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Counsel, I had a conversation with Mayor-elect Harris on this item, and he proposed, if you are willing, for us to table this item and just bring it up at our next council meeting. Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask you to do that anyway, because I am also a representative of CAPCOG, and I would gladly give up my seat. And, and I will just caveat that, that I'm pretty much the only city manager in our area. The CAPCOG seats are filled by elected officials, and so I would gladly. So when we bring it back, we will fill two seats, hopefully, if council is so amenable.
Okay. So, counsel, one thing to be aware of is that this particular organization is going to meet at times, probably decided by a large body of people. It's going to be something like, and I'm just going to make this part up, you know, I don't know, once a quarter, on a Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoon, or something like that, in Austin, Texas. And so this does not suit me, for instance, with a full-time job to be able to go to Austin, because, you know, you have the drive time there and back, plus the meeting time. I mean, it's basically almost half a day practically. But we do have several entrepreneurs on council that might have more flexibility. So be thinking, and maybe even look into it, and see what it might look like for you, if you might be interested in doing it for the discussion at the next meeting. So for now, maybe a motion to table.
I make a motion to table until our next regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table from counselperson Meyer, a second from counselperson Foster. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item 10 B. Consider an act on Resolution Number R 2025-97, approving the Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center Terms and Conditions. Ms. Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, counsel. We're here tonight to, to consider an act on a resolution approving the current Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center Terms and Conditions. You have the history in your packet, I'll just briefly cover. In 2011, the original policies and procedures were created for the Convention Center, and we used those for many years. That was an eight-page document that was included with a contract, and I would numerous times jokingly say, it's like buying a car, every time someone would rent the Convention Center. So in 2017, those policies and procedures were modified to terms and conditions for the Convention Center, and took that down to about a four-page document that is now used within our current software, CCC. So we wanted it to be more user-friendly for the client, simpler for them to read, and so it has served us well for all of these years. Now, there is a couple of things that happened in the last 14 years. In 2011, they were voted on, but it wasn't done by resolution or, and ordinance. In 2017, they were presented, but they were never voted on. It just said that they would become effective January of 2018. So you guys have worked with me enough, I hope you know that I wouldn't come up here in 2017 and say, this is the way it's going to be. But somehow, in all of the management, or our new city manager, I guess they felt like it didn't need to be voted on. Well, in current conversations with our current city manager, she, and I follow her direction, we do need to vote on these, and hopefully y'all have reviewed those in your packet. We did come back and do just several edits that we sent to the attorney with their approval. And if you'll look at the additions that was included, we want to add back the, the restrictions on obscene, lewd, offensive language that was included in the 2011, but it was taken out in 2017. And that would be, I would, would be at the discretion of the city manager, and the city manager could appeal to the city council. And that was due to some concerns that had, have come up, I would say, in the last month, on what types of events could be or should be at the Convention Center. The other thing that we added was the rental fee is due 60 days prior to the event. That's the way it's really been since day one in 2011. The security deposit does not apply to the rental fee. They pay a security deposit that holds their date. They pay the full rental fee. If there's no damages or additional amenities needed or fees, then we always refund their security deposit. I can honestly say, we've never not given anybody their security deposit back. They've all taken good care of the center when they've used it. And the security deposit will not be refunded if an event is canceled. So those are the edits that we have that's included in the 2025 Terms and Conditions.
I have a question about term and condition number four. It says reservations for events less than 12 months out are done on a first-come, first-served basis. So why is it specified for events less than 12 months out versus, say, all events?
Well, that goes back probably to the original ones. I can tell you, as we book it, it is on a first-come, first-served basis.
So then, should we strike for events less than 12 months out, and just say reservations are done on a first-come, first-served basis?
Yeah.
That would be more...
Yes.
Yeah, if that's, if that's our practice. I mean, I don't want to change it, but it's, it just, it struck me as something that was like, oh, well, what happens on the other side, you know, for...
Yes, sir.
Counselperson Meyer.
Thank you. So under decorations?
Okay, let's get over there, all right.
This is like one of my critical things in life, D, no glitter, thank you.
Yes, yes.
There should, okay, let me get on my personal...
But we can still wear it to council, though, right?
You can wear it to council if you want to.
Okay, thank you, good, good.
But, and, and seriously, the reason I am saying that, not just because I hate glitter, because I do, and I'm going to say that about myself, but I have been to events before where there was glitter, and I had glitter on me for like a year, and my clothes for like, so thank you for the no glitter.
You're welcome. We put that in there. Now, I can't say we don't allow it, but there are some times, I would say, the prom, when those girls have glitter on their gowns, and, and Steve, and Ben, and Carly, and Matt, all of us are picking up glitter literally for months to try to get that out of the carpet.
I totally hear you, Beth, and I understand that, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Why the prohibition on popcorn, cotton candy, and snow cones? I mean, those seem like critical food groups.
Carpet, just, it stains the carpet, and the popcorn smell gets in the Convention Center. So you don't want to have a really nice event, like in two days, and they walk in and it smells like popcorn. They can still have popcorn, like in a bag, like prepackaged popcorn, we just don't allow you to pop it inside the Convention Center.
Counselperson Foster.
I like all the content. I would appreciate the format being tweaked, so it's a little easier to read.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with any of the content. I like all the content, apart from the strike-through we're going to make, but that's my suggestion.
Okay.
You know, I, I think one of the things that I heard was that by making it less pretty, which is largely due to spacing, right? I, I think that's, because there was another version of this one, you know, in the packet, that when I, when I got to it, I was like, oh, this one looks really pretty. I had that, that's...
More pages?
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah, it was the eight-page thing.
Eight-page document, yes.
That she was referring to. And so it kind of turned into a, you know, smaller fonts pushed together so that it was fewer pages. And so there was an element of that that was done on purpose.
I noticed that as well, but in this particular document, there is inconsistent spacing, which is hard to read, and then usually for like the A and B, the sub-stuff, it's like tabbed over just a little bit, so you can see the, that's, that's...
We can correct that.
Thank you.
We sure will.
Yeah, yeah, no, that would help. I could see that.
Readability, thank you.
Yeah, that would help.
Don't make it pretty, just readability. Thank you. Great content.
Okay, so counsel, we're probably looking for a motion that strikes the item for events less than 12 months, and makes all events on a first-come, first-served basis, and improving the readability of the content without making it longer.
I wanted to add the bullet, appeal to the city council. Right now, there is no appeal. It's, some of those restrictions are solely at the discretion of the city manager. I always like to tell folks, there's never a way around a regulation, but there's certainly a way through a regulation, through the legislative process.
I make a motion. Motion to approve.
Sorry, I'm sorry. One second, let me just ask her a question. So you're, you're talking about really the whole thing, right?
Through those restrictions, obscene, lewd, offensive language, that...
Well, shouldn't it be just everything?
Well, yes, but in that, I, I didn't write everything.
No, 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 I'm saying popcorn. The city manager, I want popcorn, and I want the city council to decide if I can have popcorn at my event. I mean, it's, it's...
Sure.
I'm saying that it's for the entire document, or any element in the document. Because I really like popcorn. I mean, you know, I'm just saying, it's, it's not tied to any particular item. It's, it's for the whole thing.
Sure.
So we would be looking at, you know, more or less an item 31, that would be jointly that any restriction in this document can be appealed to the city manager and the city council. Okay, now.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve with the appeal added to the city council, the bullet on that, and the city manager. Mayor Protim Kirkland, could you please state the other amendments we are making to this?
Yes. So, and you'll have to state them, but, yes. So the first one was on item number four, and it was to state that the first-come, first-served basis applies to all reservations, instead of just those less than 12 months out. And then the second one was to format the document with indentions for readability.
With the amendments that state the first-come, first-served basis refers to all of the items, and also to reformat the document.
Second.
Okay, so we had a motion from counselperson Meyer, a second from counselperson Low. Any more discussion?